Good evening. The meeting of the special meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's the way it's supposed to be said. Yes, the name that.
Mr. Gorski, can we please have a roll call?
It's supposed to have those pauses, that the whole.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Here.
Mr. Chiarela.
Here.
Mrs. Antelis.
Here.
Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Mr. Masters.
Here.
Mr. Tesler.
Here.
Mrs. Ferroni.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a call.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted April 13th, 2012, 1 at all schools, 2 the Home News Tribune, 3 Cranberry Press, and 4 filed with the Clerk of the municipality. At this time, we're going to be having a workshop called Evaluating the Superintendent, and we have with us this evening Ms. Gwen Thornton. She's the Middlesex County Field Service Representative from New Jersey School Boards. She's here to give the board members training on how to evaluate the superintendent. But before we get into that, I'm going to ask her if, I think it's important for the board and the public to know what the role and the responsibilities of a board member are, and what is the relationship between the board and the superintendent, and what our responsibility and obligations are to the district and the district staff. So, Ms. Thornton, we welcome you here this evening.
Well, thank you very much. Do you want to extend here, or may I extend?
Um, you can say.
Yes, yes.
While Gwen is getting ready, I'd like to just thank the board for honoring my request to have this training. I appreciate it. I know it's another night out of your evening, but I appreciate your compliance with my request.
Not a problem.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. As I'm sure you know, as board members, your major responsibility is that of creating policy for the orderly operation of your district. You are a policymaking body. You provide oversight and direction, the vision for your school district, and that is primarily your responsibility as a Board of Education. You say what you would like to see done and happen in your district, and your superintendent is responsible for making it happen. Your administrators, your principals, supervisors, directors take care of the how. You say what collectively and collaboratively. You are actually a ten-member board. You are a team. The superintendent is, in reality, the tenth member of your Board of Education, albeit without a vote, and he or she is the educational leader of your district who provides you with the kinds of information, data, background, that you need to have in order to make well-informed decisions about the direction of your school district. One of your primary responsibilities on an annual basis is the evaluation of the superintendent. ATNA calls for the evaluation of the superintendent to take place on an annual basis by April 30th of each calendar year. And while the state gave all boards the opportunity to move the election to November, they did not do any adjustment to any of the other dates around statutory requirements for boards of education. So that requirement is remaining in its current timeframe. Now, somewhere down the road, perhaps the state will adjust that in light of the majority of more than eighty-seven percent of boards moving to November, but currently it remains in place. And so you have an obligation to complete this task by the end of each April of each calendar year. It is clearly one of your most important responsibilities. The Board of Education employs one person in the school district. You employ the superintendent. He is responsible for holding all other employees accountable, and the Board of Education holds their superintendent accountable. So providing your superintendent with a well-reasoned, objective evaluation is a critical component to the success of your district. At the end of the day, most like many of you who work, who have evaluations, you know that it is a communications tool. It is designed to ensure that the superintendent and the Board of Education stay on the same page moving forward. It is another way to communicate your goals, what you think is going well, and what you perhaps would like to do perhaps slightly differently. The state law requires that each evaluation of the superintendent have the following components. You must have indicators of student achievement. Currently, they are always going to be running a year behind because of the timeframe in which we do the standardized assessments of our students, with the exception perhaps of some SATs or PSATs results which might be current for this year, but for the younger students particularly, you're going to be using last year's assessments. And that's true for every school district across the state. In 2014-15, when we moved to the PARC assessments, my hope is that because they will be technologically driven, we will have formative assessments at least, if not some level of summative assessments on a year-round basis, which will allow us to then use current indicators of student achievement rather than a preceding year. It asks you to look at progress toward achievement of the district goals. Your board should, on an annual basis, be sitting down with your superintendent and members of his administrative team if he so chooses, and developing annual goals that speak to the kinds and types of activities you wish to see accomplished in the school district over the course of a given year. I think in here, in Monroe, you call them board goals. We would call those district goals, the goals that the superintendent is responsible for. Again, you say what you want to see done with those goals, but it is Dr. Hamilton's responsibility for the how. You, as a board, should be evaluating the superintendent on the progress toward the achievement of the district goals. Typically, we would set goals in the late spring, early summer, have the administration take time over the summer when it's a little less busy, without every bus running and every student in every building, have the opportunity to develop action plans to implement those goals, and then you would be receiving updates and monitoring the progress toward the completion of those goals on a monthly, quarterly basis, whatever your board so deems as necessary. So those are two of the components. And then the law asks you to look at those areas of performance strength, and if there are any areas that you have a concern around performance improvement. So in your packet on the left-hand side, I have brought you a copy of our instrument just for the sake of discussion. It's in blue. We have gone to an online process to assist boards in completing this task in a little less of an onerous way. It is available online at our homepage, www njsba.org. You all would enter your username, which is your complete email address that your business administrator has registered with us for each of you. If you don't have a password, and who can remember those passwords, unless you cheat like I do and stick them on little stickies in different places in my office, you would have to, you can click on Forgot Password, and it'll send you to an area where you can develop your own password, or we will send you a password. You then can enter your data. Dr. Hamilton would first have to enter his goals and his assessment. Once that's completed, you would receive an email from me, and a copy of that email is in the yellow on the left-hand side of your packet, just so you can see what that looks like. And it is automatically triggered, once Dr. Hamilton enters his goals, it automatically triggers an email from me to each of the nine of you, saying that the evaluation is now completed, your superintendent has completed his input, asking you for your assessment. Okay? And so then you would do your portion of the assessment toward progress or achievement of district goals, and then the secondary set of indicators are around the leadership skills, in the area of personnel, in the area of policy development, staff and community relationships. You can certainly sit and read this document at your leisure. If you would like to do it that way, it is completely confidential. I hit a button, and it automatically compiles verbatim all of your input. We don't even correct misspellings, so if you have them in there, they come back that way. And I'm half being funny, but it does come back absolutely verbatim. I can track them simply by your last name, so it would say, and tell us completed, but I can't see anyone's individual input, nor am I interested, because we're not in the business of evaluating your superintendent. We are just giving you a compilation back of the data, so that as you sit as a Board of Education to write the summary evaluation, you have a completed form that includes all of the input from all of the board, non-conflicted board members. I don't know if you have any conflicted board members, but the SEC, which is not the Securities Exchange Commission, which is what I thought it was when I became, I used to teach high school government, that's, when I became a school board member, I figured out that was the School Ethics Commission. The School Ethics Commission has held that board members who have a family member employed on a full-time basis in any capacity in the school district are conflicted out from participating in the superintendent's evaluation, contract negotiations, and any terms and conditions, excuse me, of employment for a superintendent. So if you have questions about whether you are potentially conflicted out, obviously your board attorney could give you a definitive answer on that, but if you are conflicted out, you should recuse yourself and not participate in the evaluation process, either in inputting the data, in sitting in any discussions around the evaluation. You are not permitted by law, by operation of law through the School Ethics Commission in participating in that process. So I'd just like to point that out. You may not have any one. I have some boards that have a majority of their board members who are conflicted out, in which case you would have to invoke the doctrine of necessity, which is a legal document that lays out to your public what all of those conflicts are. You post it, you wait so many days, and then everyone can come back in and participate in the evaluation. But that may not be a concern for you, but I like to point that out in case it is a concern. Once you receive the compilation back, it is the one time during the year that a Board of Education is allowed to meet without the superintendent being present. You must send a rice notice to the superintendent, which indicates to the superintendent that you are going to be discussing his or her performance. You may then, as a board, come to consensus around the summative evaluation. That summative evaluation that you draw from everyone's comments should be a majority document, and I can't emphasize that enough. It should reflect the will of the majority of the Board of Education. If, for example, you're a board member that has a minority perspective or viewpoint, let's say, for example, a majority of the board thinks that the superintendent has done an outstanding job in the area of policy, but you, as a board member, are still very concerned, for example, about HIB policy or another kind of policy. When you meet, and you're required by law to meet as a full Board of Education with the superintendent to discuss his or her evaluation, that is where the minority voice would find expression. That's your opportunity, as a board member, to say, "While I understand the majority of my fellow board members believe you've done an outstanding job, let me just say I still have a concern, and here's why." That's important, because I have never met a superintendent who did not want to meet the expectation of their board. They don't always succeed, but I have never met a superintendent who wasn't committed to trying to meet the needs of all of the board members. So I think it's very important that if you have a particular area of concern that does not find its way into the written report, because it is a minority viewpoint, that you take that opportunity at the summative conference to express your concern, so that your superintendent is well-aware of how you, as an individual board member, may be feeling. It is a communications tool. It's not to be a gotcha. So I think you can say anything that needs to be said, depending upon the words you choose and the tone you take. So I think it's very important to remember that. It is a majority document, but the rights of the minority are protected by virtue of their ability to have that discussion when you share the summative evaluation with your superintendent. So when I return the compilation, I generally return it to the Board President. We will not email it, because once I have compiled all of your individual input, it becomes a personnel document. I deliver it in hard copy to the Board President or to your Board Secretary for your Board President in a sealed envelope. It is a confidential process, and I can't stress enough to you the importance of maintaining that level of confidentiality, because it is a personnel matter. Your superintendent, of course, always, as with any certificated employee in your district, has the right to ask that the discussion take place in open public session if he or she would choose. Typically, that does not happen, so the board meets in closed session with the superintendent to review the summary evaluation once you have written it. The superintendent signs it and dates it as acknowledgment of receipt. The Board President signs it and dates it. A copy should be kept by your board attorney on behalf of the board, so that the board always has a copy available to them should they need it, and of course, your superintendent gets a copy for his or her personnel file. As with all certificated employees in your school district, your superintendent has ten days in which he can attach to an evaluation any kind of information that he or she believes would clarify, elucidate, amplify the evaluation. It could be test scores, it could be something additional, an explanation to something. The board doesn't get to say yes or no to that attachment, and it's the same for all of your teachers, your supervisors, your principals, vice principals. All certificated staff's evaluation include that same component piece, where they have ten days in which to attach to their evaluation anything they believe would further clarify the evaluation. The board doesn't, again, get to say yes or no, but you should be made aware if there is something that is attached, and you should have the opportunity to read whatever that attachment is, so that you are aware of it moving forward. Once you have done that, the evaluation is actually completed. So it's not a difficult process, but it is a very important one, and one that needs to be done very thoughtfully. Keep in mind that when you're evaluating your superintendent, you're evaluating an entire year's performance. You are not just looking at what stayed in the budget or what came out of the budget. You are not looking at, wow, this is what I thought we should do with staff at tenure renewal time, or the anticipation of that, and we didn't do it. You're looking at their entire scope of progress toward achievement of district goals, as well as the progress of the district overall, and the leadership skills over an entire year. So you want to make sure that as you're reflecting on that, very often, many superintendents will provide to their boards of education a self-assessment, or a summary, or to take the updates that you've been giving perhaps over the course of the year on progress toward district goals, and include that in the board's packet ahead of doing the evaluation. I don't know about all of you, I have trouble with last week, much less last, you know, August, and last July, and last June. And sometimes we can forget all of the kinds of things that have been accomplished between your personal lives and your professional lives, and then all your school board work. Sometimes it's very difficult to recall all of those things. So very often, a superintendent prior to your doing this will include for the board, you know, just sort of a recap of the year, hitting the highlights, and you certainly don't have to write a separate report. You can take your updates, just put them all together, put them in the board packet, and that's one way to just sort of help all of you as you're thinking about the evaluation to do it effectively. The other thing that I think it's very important for your Board of Education to consider, no matter what evaluation tool you're using, whether you're using ours, or whether you have a different one in your district, is to really have a board discussion around the categories. Not so much for the district goals, but if you look at the categories on the leadership skills, it is broken into five categories: commendable, meets expectations, needs improvement, unsatisfactory, and not observed. Not observed is there particularly sometimes for new board members, who may just not have been through an entire board cycle, who may have gotten appointed mid-year, or perhaps you weren't negotiating, so you didn't get to see that process take place over the course of a whole year. If you haven't seen something and you don't know it, you should check no, not observed, because it's not an affirmation, it's neither positive nor negative, it simply is what is. I haven't observed it, I can't comment on it. But I think it's important to talk about what is commendable. I had a board member say to me one time, "I would never rate anyone commendable." I said, "Oh, for heaven's sakes, why not?" And they said, "Because if you're commendable, you can never get better." I said, "Okay, and that's a fair assessment. That's someone's interpretation of that particular word." But I think it's important for you, as a board, to have a discussion around what does commendable mean, what does meets expectation mean, what does needs improvement mean. There are some people who would say, "Well, meeting expectation is like getting a C." I don't see it that way, but someone might see it that way. So I think it's important to have that discussion as a board, so you are all on the sort of the same page as you go about filling out your forms, that you've talked about what does commendable mean. Commendable to me means you did an outstanding job, and that doesn't imply to me that you couldn't do a more commendable job next year. But that's my interpretation of that word, and everyone has a slightly different interpretation of those words. So I think it's very useful to have a discussion around what those terms mean. Here's the other piece that I think's very important. I know that this can be slightly time-consuming to do it, but it is very important, because it goes, it's part of your, the superintendent's personnel file. If you're going to say that someone has done a commendable job, it is a much better evaluation if you take the time to comment on why that is. Or if you're going to say that someone needs improvement, then you need to cite the reasons why. Give some specifics around why you have identified that particular area is as in need of improvement. Again, I've never met a superintendent who did not want to meet the expectations of the board. So if you're going to say that someone needs improvement, then you need to say why. I would want to know why someone thought, if I weren't fulfilling all of the responsibilities of my profession, in my occupation, that's fine. Tell me why, so that I know how to correct it, so I know what to do to do better. And if you're going to give someone a commendable, you know, skills are transferable. So if you say you are commendable in this particular area, and here's why, and there's another area that perhaps is not as strong, it gives your superintendent then the ability to be able to say, "Well, I was doing really well in this area and commendable. Perhaps I could take some of the kinds of things I did here and do them over here." Because skills are, hopefully, transferable. We're all about being lifelong learners and continually improving. We have that expectation for our students, we have that expectation for our staff. Clearly, we should have that expectation for ourselves as board members in what it is that we do, in our responsibilities. So that's what this format looks like. I've also included for you, in the back on the left-hand side, two samples of summative evaluation documents. One is in buff, because we kill trees in color in my office, and one is also in yellow. This is just to give you an idea of the kinds of ways that you could write up the summative. And if we start with the left-hand, the left, the yellow-colored sheet, which was in my left hand, you can see that it's pretty much an outline form. You attach the indicators of pupil progress, you write the goals, then the board's assessment of those goals, areas of superintendent's strength in executive skills, and then areas of professional growth, or where you would like to see the superintendent perhaps do some professional development. If there aren't any, you don't have to make them up. That's supposed to be funny, guys. I had a board member ask me that once. Do I have to make them up? I said, "No. If someone's doing an outstanding job, that's just fine." But that's how you would write it, and then you could simply sign it and date it. But this is just meant to give you sort of a format. Here is the same kind of report in a narrative form. It's just a different way of conveying the same kind of information. And there's no requirement in law that you do it in a specific way, so you have flexibility. I had one board that used to do it in Iambic Pantameter, and I'm not making it up, in Camden County. They would write a poem. Is there something to be done? They had a poet on the board, and that's how they would do it. It was very creative, actually, year over year. I've also included for you a copy of the board's self-evaluation. The board's self-evaluation, for a very short period in time, found expression in CUSAC as a requirement of the Governance DPR, with the streamlined operation, where they have now changed the DPRs yet again. It is no longer found in the Governance DPR. It is, however, found in the Annual Statement of Assurance, which is like the old AASA report. The longer you're around, the longer things come back. If you just stick around, we give them a new acronym, but they're back. So under the Statement of Assurance, the self-evaluation is still there. Once you hold the superintendent accountable for his or her performance by doing your own self-evaluation, looking at your governance operation, your processes and procedures, it's a way of holding yourselves accountable. What did we do well over the course of the year? Are there any areas where we, as a board, might want to do some additional training or professional development? How can we do better as a team? Many boards will have their superintendent and their board secretary participate in the self-evaluation, and you do it the same way. Your username is your full email address, it's available online. This I can email back to you, because it's not confidential. Additionally, I can bring it back to you, so that you would have it in time and use it perhaps when you do your goal-setting for the following school year. Okay? Questions, because I'm doing a lot of talking, that you have around this process?
Does any of the board members have any questions?
Are they this close? Yes, sir.
You mentioned earlier that conflicted board members cannot be involved with the formal evaluation, the written evaluation, but they can participate in the...
They may not participate in any part of the superintendent's evaluation.
Does the board have to do an online evaluation, or can they decide to do it in-house?
You may do it however you would like and are most comfortable. Some boards will do it in-house, you don't have to do it online. We went to, we used to compile the results by hand. Board members would complete it by hand, we would take them in, we would compile them. It was very time-consuming, it was slow in getting them back to boards because of the timeframe. This allows us to help you in a more expeditious fashion, but you may use whatever instrument you have mutually agreed upon. I'm sure that Dr. Hamilton has language in your contract that says that the superintendent and Board of Education will agree to an evaluation instrument. This particular one, we worked with NJASA on, developing, school boards in collaboration with the Superintendents Association, developed this evaluation format as a way of helping boards of education and superintendents to sort of standardize the process. But you may certainly use whatever process you are most comfortable with.
Are there any other questions from board members? Dr. Hamilton? Oh, Mr. Braverman?
At the conclusion, after all of the written evaluations are done, does the President of the Board put them all together, consolidate them?
Typically, once I deliver the compilation, either the Personnel Committee, if you have one, or the Board Officers, will take that compilation, write a draft summative evaluation. You may meet, that's the one time you may meet without the superintendent, to review the summative evaluation. Come to consensus as a board that you're comfortable with that document. Once that happens, and the board is comfortable, that document then gets shared ahead of time with Dr. Hamilton, and then the full board, you're required by law, and it says the full majority of the Board of Education, must meet with the superintendent to review and discuss the summative evaluation. That's a requirement of the law. Okay?
In the past, numerical evaluations were, numerical numbers were given to each of these items, such as commendable being five, and meeting expectations four, et cetera. And in the end, the, I guess the President of the Board used to put it all together and come out with an average. Is that recommended?
I don't tend to favor averages, because you lose the top and you lose the bottom. I think it is more definitive to say, five board members marked this area commendable, four said this meets expectations, because, again, it is designed to communicate as much information... much information as you can, and in average, you lose something. And I think we help communicate more effectively when we're more direct, and there's more information rather than less. Averages are fine, if that's what you want to do. There's no prohibition against it. But I don't recommend it because I think in an average, again, you know, you lose the top and you lose the bottom. And, again, I will go back to, as an effective communication tool, you want to be conveying as much information as you possibly can. I get very distressed sometimes when I deliver compilations, and, you know, there are things that say commendable, or things that say meets, needs improvement, and there's no explanation around it. So, it's not helpful to the person reading it if they haven't, if you haven't taken the time to share what it is you're concerned about, or what it is you think is going wonderfully well and you're very excited about. I think the more you can convey information in this document, the more useful the process will be. It's not connected to merit goals, so there's no amount of dollar attached to it. There are some contracts now in the state with the new superintendent salary caps, as you may be aware, where superintendents are allowed to have three quantitative and two qualitative, up to that many, goals in a contract per year. And there, you may want to look at averages, okay, where you're talking about that. But that's not the case here at this particular point in time, so I don't think that there's a reason to do those kinds of averages. But, again, that's a board decision, not a New Jersey School Boards Association decision. We're here to help you through the process, to answer questions, to do what we can to make it as useful as possible for you.
At the conclusion of the evaluation process, should the board of education make specific recommendations to the superintendent for the coming year?
If there are areas that you want to see the superintendent do some additional professional development to further hone his skills in a particular area, that is perfectly appropriate for the board to do. But keep in mind, the board speaks with one voice. It should reflect the will of the majority of the board, not what nine, or five, or four different individual board members think, but what the full board of education thinks, just the same way that the superintendent only takes direction from the full board of education, not from nine different board members. But, yes, that would be appropriate. This is your opportunity to have that frank, open discussion that says, we think you're doing great, we're delighted with this, but there may be some, you know, if you were considering, you've done it. You built this building. But perhaps if you were considering, I won't say building another building, but if you were in that position, and you had a superintendent perhaps that did not have a great deal of experience in construction or referenda, one of the things you might suggest in, for the following year, if you knew that was coming, is that might be an area where you would like the superintendent to do some ongoing professional development, if that were something that you were considering or contemplating. You're not, obviously, you've just opened this fabulous building, but that would be the kind of thing that you would find and write in an evaluation, for example, for the following year.
Specifically, is there a recommendation of how to report this, the outcomes, to the public?
You don't. It is a private, confidential document.
I understand that, but the public is interested, obviously, maybe not a lot of people, but there are a number of people in the community that would like to know, did he get a great rating, or is he just hanging on?
The board of education does not have the ability to communicate that information. It is a personnel document. All personnel have certain rights that you can't violate as a board of education. The Code of Ethics requires you to support and protect all school personnel in the proper performance of their duties, and to comply with all federal and state laws around confidentiality in matters of personnel and student discipline issues, student behavior, the same kinds of pieces apply. And while it is unfortunate, the public, on the other hand, has elected all of you to represent their interests and the interests primarily, I would tell you from my perspective, of what is best for every child in Monroe Township and Jamesburg that come up here for the high school. So, the public is going to, certainly, you can speak to the public that you have completed the process in a timely fashion, and it has been completed, but you may not share the contents of that document in any fashion. The superintendent, if he or she chose to do so, that would be different. They have that opportunity, but you, as a board, do not.
I just have a quick question. How about with the self-evaluation or the creation of board goals, is that something that could and should be open to the public?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Most goal-setting meetings are held in open public. Self-evaluation report-outs are done in open public. If I came in and talked about it with you, it would be done in an open public meeting. But because the superintendent is an employee of the district, there are certain legal requirements around that process that are different from the board.
Mr. Klein?
Samples that you're giving us here for the superintendent's evaluation, these are just samples.
Yes, they're just blank forms.
In other words, we can use this, and we can add.
I can't add. You'd have to use...
No, we can't.
You could, absolutely, if you so chose to do that. I couldn't compile it.
Okay, then if the board chooses, or I don't know if it's up to the president, to have this sent to your office to do the...
If you add or change this document in any way, I would be unable to compile it electronically.
Okay, so we're better off doing it ourselves?
Yep.
That will be a discussion we'll have.
No, it is a limitation. I understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. Anyone else? I know that this is already April 23rd. We probably won't have this evaluation completed by the 30th. Dr. Hamilton had said he would be willing to give the board a letter that would extend the date. That would be okay.
As far as I know. It's very generous. Thank you.
Dr. Hamilton, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, actually. A couple of things you shared tonight that I wasn't, I didn't know, actually, so...
You too.
I'm glad you came.
My pleasure.
Mr. Tesler?
Just one question. I guess we're going to have a discussion as a board on how we're going to file it, whether we can do it electronically or on paper. That will be a separate discussion.
Can we do that tonight, after Ms. Thornton leaves? Or we could do that Wednesday?
I would also point out, if it's the portion of the leadership skills that you want to append and extend or amend, and not the goals, you could simply input the goals, and we could compile the goal section for you, if that would be helpful. In other words, you don't have to use the form in its entirety if you have your own individual district form for that. But I would, again, just say to you that that, by contract, the superintendent and the board have to come to consensus around whatever form you agree to use.
In other words, once a form is developed, then our president and vice president would go over it with Dr. Hamilton for his approval on what we're going to use for evaluation.
Correct.
That's fine.
Anyone else? Okay, I think that would conclude our training.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for being here with us. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to call. We are here to assist in whatever way we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it might be a good idea, too, for the board to take this home and digest it, and then have the conversation about what we would like to do on Wednesday for the next board meeting.
And with the proposed extension, that gives us a little breathing room, rather than having a cutthroat stare at us in the face.
Yeah, come up with a date that would be conducive to all of us. Okay? At this time, we will go to number six on the agenda, public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Note Stein, 15 Nathaniel Street. Just a couple of questions. I think most of these board members at one point, maybe all of you, have evaluated superintendents. Are there new requirements that forced us to have this workshop, or is this that we've just been not doing it correctly?
No, I don't think it's been either. I think some of these board members are new within the last two to three years and have not had any training on how to evaluate the superintendent. So, it was decided, and Dr. Hamilton asked if that would just be good for us to have this conversation so that we're all on the same page when we decide to do an evaluation. And the newer board members, and the older board members who haven't had training in a while, get to hear the same thing.
One of the comments that I noticed, I believe Mr. Braverman asked the question regarding conflicted employees participating in the evaluation process. Is that something that's happened in the past, or is this a new requirement?
No, it's been in the past. If you have a family member who works full-time, they cannot participate in the superintendent evaluation.
Right, and we've been aware of that, and we've not allowed that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I think Ms. Thornton also mentioned that some new contracts for superintendents have actually some quantitative type of goals in there. I understand that the evaluation is confidential because it's a personnel issue, but if there are quantitative goals in the superintendent's contract, I think it would be important that the public knows if those quantitative goals were actually being met, and the only way to really do that is by letting us know if the evaluation showed that those quantitative goals were met. How does the board respond to that? I know that that's not the issue right now, but at some point, you may have quantitative goals in your contract in the future.
My current contract was developed prior to that provision being made available to boards and superintendents, so there are no quantitative goals in my current contract. When this contract expires, should the board decide to revisit that? I would have no problem with sharing those goals, frankly. I think it would be a good idea.
Excellent. That's what I was hoping here, doctor. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Robert Rhodes, 18 Muirfield Boulevard. It was mentioned about the goals, so I assume there was goals for fiscal year ending June 30th of this year. Who is the custodian of those goals?
The superintendent has a copy of the goals, and each board member has a copy of the goals.
We wanted to get them. Where would we get a copy?
It's actually posted online under Action Board, Superintendent Action Plan.
On the website?
Yes, sir.
Superintendent Action Plan?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, we will have a... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Leary. It's nice to have you back. You're feeling better.
It's a pleasure being back. The point I'd like to make is that we've had some very significant changes in the legal environment for the whole education process. For example, the harassment, intimidation, and bullying action has made a dramatic change in the whole administration process. It consumes a fair piece of Dr. Hamilton's time and all the administrators. And so, it's important that we stay current, and we understand the legal environment and many other aspects of the whole education process.
Anyone else? Okay, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Klein, and second by Ms. Entellus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You oppose? Mr. He opposes. Abstentions? The motion to adjourn is passed.